Paula, a little pre-wed media reading for the council today. The other day, Mr. Roberts and Mr. Long brought one of our students to school. They noticed a young lady walking on the road and a van pulled up and the driver was talking to this young lady, not being comfortable with this situation. They pulled over to check on this young lady. She said that she did not know this man who was offering her a ride. The guys wanted to make sure she was safe, told her they would take her to school. It is such a blessing to have employees that care about not just their job, but their community.
Amen.
Good job, Brian.
We'll be thanks for everything that's concerned.
All right, we're going to move on to public works. Paul is not here, but you have some information on the existing pavilion.
Yes, the mayor mentioned before, I know Mason and I are working on the Wood County Park District grant right now, and it was brought up that maybe we need a new roof on the pavilion if you go to these simple pictures right there, front and back of it, actually, a couple of pictures. He said to hold off on applying for that funding because there had been previous discussions from councils on this specific building and we want to make sure we invest money so they might tear down soon after.
There's nothing good about that building. I mean, just look at the pictures. The pillars are falling apart, the brick pillars, the floor is broken badly. And because of its locale, if we can get the money, Mason, if we can get the money, it'd be really something if we could have a building with three sides, maybe a go-in fireplace, because people are dead to letting down.
Like outdoor, like, you know, heat up, wood in there, say Christmas carols kind of thing?
Yeah, even if it just, if it had the, if it had, you know, two or three sides break, the cold winds, people could go in there, warm up.
I do, I do. I know in the past also, as the mayor said, that there have been discussions about adding an enclosed pavilion or enclosed buildings of sorts. I'm not sure if those-
Well, if it was fully enclosed, that's another one we could do, as we do with the current ones, and rent out.
Is that the flood right there?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why the floor is like it is?
Yeah.
We are still looking at a cost estimate from Colliers on stormwater instruction going through the park right now, but as of now, yes, it does flood. So we'll have to put-
But I'm also guessing, Brian, maybe you know, I bet you that's a four-inch floor.
No, I'm assuming it's only four inches.
It's probably a hundred years old also.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we put, if we put a building with a six-inch floor, because of where it is, probably would be great.
Yeah, so is it worth, in you guys' opinion, that have been here for overtime, putting any money into this thing or just starting fresh?
Starting fresh.
Wiping it out?
I think Josh can demo it pretty quickly, pretty easily.
I think it should be, you know, I just, I just look at, even the loose bricks, I don't like that, uncomfortable with that. Did we, did we take out that other one that we were going to, do you know?
We did us.
Good.
We took it out, yeah.
I agree with whatever, wherever the thought came from of doing a more, it could be a little larger, but I'm sure that for even the shelter houses we currently rent out, they, not all of them have to be as large as they are for what they're used for. So the footprint would be negotiable.
It sounds like we're agreeing to demo it and do time?
The only thing I don't like is we keep on tearing things down, but we're not replacing. I mean, we've done them apart, monkey bars disappeared and other things disappearing, but we're not replacing. To me, I think we need a plan before we just go tearing something down, because I think they still use the shelter house.
People do, I've saw them leave a bunch out there.
I agree.
If we don't have a game plan that's going to be 10 years before we replace it, I mean, we're not good. We don't have money for roofing or a paint, you know?
Or let's just, let's just get the funds and have that as part of the plan. Because as I've pointed out, you know, we don't build, we need to.
So the grant you were seeking was for repair only?
We're going for the pair of the roof. It's the Wood County Park District grant we get every year, but it's not going to be, I'm almost guaranteeing, it's not going to be enough money to build.
Do they have grants out there for?
I would think there probably is something for a park building of substance, but-
I mean, the old phrase about lipstick on a pig, when you talk about a roof for that thing, you know, the pig's half-bad.
Yeah, that was the original thought, but I didn't know the true foundation or structural issues until I heard this from Josh. Who is behind demoing.
Yeah. Mason, I hate to dump this on you, but I will help in any way I can. Let's see what it would take to get a building there. And that's not to say it has to be like this. You know, there are these, these places that have the, and there's a display of them out there next to that building we own, which is currently leased out on 25. There's those displays of those metal things. Well, those metal things, because I've got one, I park under, those things hold up, they're not expensive, and you can get them three-sided.
I don't know if they'd hold up under the wind, though.
Mine holds up under some big wind.
Just look and see what kind of grants we can get, if there's anything out there.
Thanks, Tim. That's a good amount.
Good discussion.
Anybody else have any questions for Paula that we can ask her? All right, we're going to move on to public utilities. All right.
You're up, and I know Brian, you're going to talk about CSO.
So really, the only thing we really have going on right now is we are doing the mid-opening tomorrow at two o'clock for the CSO closure. However, this week, when I speak, went to engineers, I have not reached out to the EPA yet. I'll wait until we get the mid-openings to see what it's coming in at. Supposed to have been done this year, probably won't get done until next year. Hopefully, it's not going to be a huge issue with the EPA, because we are still making progress and we're still moving forward, because the gates themselves that we're going to need for that is at least six months out once. It's once somebody has been on it, we give them the job and they order it, it's six months from then. So we do already have the permit to install it, so everything's good there. As far as I know, there's like two or three people that draw plans, so we'll see, hopefully we get two or three bids tomorrow and they're competitive. So we'll know more tomorrow after we open those up, but other than that, we, that's just been sample, sample that water plant, just doing maintenance and stuff. We did get the fire truck from, the old equipment truck from the fire department.
Red box.
I worked out a deal with Mr. Francisco on that, so we are currently using that. We got everything switched over, got the fire decals off, our decal is on, new generator installed on it, and unfortunately, the boys had to use it last night. So everything worked out like it was supposed to, I guess, so, but, so, other than that, we really don't have a whole lot. We will be doing budgets, I believe my day is the 24th. Yeah, so we'll be sitting down on that. I do have EPA inspection, the 17th at the water treatment plant, so we prepared for violations. I'm just saying that because they're going to find something, I promise, they always do.
What they're paying for.
Yeah, that's it. So they've been getting a little bit more difficult each and every year. So right now, I am working on updating our asset management plan. I started working on that today a little bit. I will have that ready by the 17th, so when they ask for it, we'll have it ready for them to look at. I think overall, there's only one thing off the top of my head that they're probably going to violate us on, and we'll deal with that when it happens, but it's nothing significant, it's just something that we done in-house that they're probably not going to like. However, it needed to be done, and it is what it is. So we'll see, we'll see, maybe, maybe not, maybe so. I mean, if we don't, it'll be the first one in three years we haven't, because every time we get somebody new, they want different things, and then it's never, hey, can you do, they violate you for everything, which is ridiculous, but it is what it is. So other than that, I think we're sitting pretty good. We are flushing hydrants, so we'll be continuing that on for the next couple, the rest of this week and next week. Northwest Water, Macomb, had to take one of the clear wells out of service for whatever reason, I don't know, so right now, they currently have that drained, and they're going to start refilling that on Monday. And so that's about 500,000 gallons of water they'll be pulling up, they'll be selling them, so that's a bonus there. Other than that, I don't really have anything unless you get that.
Let me ask a stupid question. For years, I've been hearing clear well.
What is that? That's what actually holds the treated water, the actual potable water. It's basically, it's a water tower-
Short water tower.
On ground, on the ground. So our treated water goes to the clear wells, and then we pump it from our clear wells to distribution to the towers. So it's basically a storage facility of treated water.
Also, so council knows, the previous water equipment truck, when we put on gov deals and solves, I'll probably buy it into this year.
The, the key, how long do you think they'll be down Northwest Pottery?
They've been down for, that, they have two, they have two half, two 500,000 gallon tanks, one they took out of service. They were supposed to start filling it this Thursday, which would have worked out perfect for us, because we've been done flushing hydrants this Thursday. But contact, contractors ran into some issues. I don't actually know what they're doing. I do, I'm hoping that they're actually tying their water tower back into the clear well, because when they designed it, they did not do that. So if we shut down the main going to them, they have no water, because they have no way to get water back from their tower, for whatever reason they designed it that way, I have no idea. So anytime we have to do any maintenance or anything, we have to let them know a day ahead of time, and then they're running fire hoses from hydrants to hydrants to keep the village in water, which is kind of dumb, but heck, that's not my, my village, so.
There you go.
So I don't know if that's what they're doing, they just don't give us for maintenance, that's all I know, so.
I guess, if I may add, a couple of things in view of the public, public works, so if you're all right with it, I can add that in now.
So part of the package was I L S. Number one was, we've been talking about it, well, first, we did a refresher. Chloe, myself, and Brian were in a team's meeting for Neptune, 360, did a refresher, I think it was last week, so there was definitely value there, I think, for all parties. The Neptune, my 360, which is the new program, we're doing that training tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, so that's where we're at with that, that's number one on like my list. Number seven's the, continue to work with the insurance provider, our insurance provider, Pep, on the reimbursement for the water plant. It's just like mid-afternoon today, kind of like in a holding pattern, kind of wondering where we're at, and then our adjuster emailed, the proof of loss, it's kind of like a legal document, so Josh, administrator, didn't even sign that, had it noted right, so, so good news, you know, there's some movement there, so, so we're looking, working towards getting reimbursed for 50% of those repairs, so that was-
Which repairs?
For the older three.
Oh, okay.
Should be roughly $75,000 reimbursement.
Yeah. Seventy-four, because they'll take the deductible off and get technical on you.
Okay. I agree, I'm off the deductible.
All right, so did it?
That's all I did.
Brian, do you have anything else?
No, I don't. Thank you, I'll get these things made for you.
We're going to move on, we're going to go to finance and technology, Tim, let's go over the, I've got two different agendas here, one has next, and since you have-
Budgets and, do you want to speak about that?
Yes, so Thursday, October 23rd, there'll be three budget meetings for state services, and then Friday, the 24th, will be, well, mine, will be public works, public utilities, and finance, all going on for budget decision. So you know, Tim, any more to that?
What time are those meetings?
Yes, it's Thursday, the 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. will be EMS, noon, police, and 3:45 will be fire. On Friday, October 24th, the 8:30 a.m. for finance, 9:30 a.m. for public works, and 10:30 a.m. for public utilities. And then we wanted to get done before the third grade class was in the office at 12:15, that's why we went back to that.
Now, we open it up, haven't anybody to show up, or do we want to keep it?
That is not my decision.
Excuse me?
It's not the decision that, that my decision made.
Well, the committee chairs would be welcome in those meetings, would they not?
I would think so.
They, I mean, they were last year, no, year prior to-
Well, that's why, it's just, I mean, because we have to call it a, a meeting.
Well, as long as there's only two council members there, as long as there's not three or more, actually, I think it's four now, so as long as there's three or less.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of specify, we're doing just two, two council members, or?
Right, and you'll probably be in most of them?
I will, yeah, I plan on being in most of them, so.
So, I don't know, Eric, are you planning on being in your?
It's Friday, the 24th, at 10:30. I don't know yet, to me, please.
Well, you can let them know on that.
Yeah, I will.
I'm going to try and make mine, though, those are vacation days, so, I'm not sure I'll be there for all of them, but I can let you know.
I assume.
All right, anything else for finance and technology? You know, I do have a question.
Yes.
Do either, any, this is all for three of you. Do any of you know what's going on with 501(c)(3)? How that was formed, how it's being paid for, any of that?
That is all through the festival committee.
So is the festival committee a different entity, it's not, it's not involved with the village?
Nothing to do with it.
So then the, the village is not paying for the 501(c)(3)?
No.
Awesome, okay, that's all I knew.
I am not on the committee, but I just, I, I heard that, the way it's going, it's not, nothing to do with the village, they are paying, I think, out of their own pockets to get the 501(c)(3), so.
You think, or for sure they?
It's not coming out of village, I don't think that.
Okay, okay, that's all I knew, you know, all right, thank you, I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions, does anyone else have any questions for finance and technology? And we are going to move on to public safety. We have an all events permit?
We have three of them, actually.
I've got two here.
Another one, third one will be in the packet here, I added the third, third one's going to be in April, so. But the first one, these are just for discussion, we're going to have board voting next week, that's when they should be, got your attention beforehand.
Is that on the parade?
The first one would be the Halloween parade.
Now, I would like to apologize, because we should have had it in the September meeting for, because now we're, we've already put out the information for the parade, we're kind of-
Tim, we're just thankful you're doing it, an all serious problem with it.
Well, like I, I specify, I mean, I don't know anybody on our council who'd vote against the seventh parade, so, I mean, yes.
I'm just kidding.
I don't think so, but I just wanted to apologize that, you know, I've already put the information out there for the parade, and we haven't actually took it.
So we will up next week, I figured you were going to say where, the event date is October 25th, from 6 to 9 p.m. And the event location, Main Street, Powell School to Water Street. And the next one, I got this one a couple weeks ago, about a month ago now, this is for November 1st, Mr. Chris Behringer would like to close, say, in front of 400 West Water Street for an auction, looks like. I'm not sure if we've done that in the past, if we've allowed that in the past, seems a little odd, but, actually, this-
I mean, I think it's a lot of auctions.
Street closures, Summit Street from Water North to the First Alley, so a little more than this 400 West Water.
Knowing where that is, Tim, you work there, tell Malina on you that, knowing where that is, I wouldn't see any reason to close the street, there's plenty of parking right there.
Woods Water.
It's West Water.
West, thank you. No, West Water's off the pipe, yeah.
Summit Street, Water North Alley.
400, that's the block before West Haven, right?
I should know that, because that's where I live.
That's a big one. I can do the call and give some clarification.
Yeah, it's alive.
I don't think, are they asking for Water Street to be closed, or just this?
Summit Street.
Oh, that's fine. It wouldn't really hurt if they closed Water Street, because that, they could go around.
One up from Street, one up from Street. It's Welch's place.
Close as it is.
Fred and Luan Welch's place.
Yeah, so it's on Water, but-
It's on Water, but it's-
The corner of.
Yeah.
Did that auction take place on Quarry today? Wasn't there an auction on Quarry?
My concern would be like people's driveways.
I don't know.
There's people's driveways there, what, not a lot of people.
My girl, my, their lunch didn't seem to- I'm going to drive by there and see if there's any more concerns I can see, if I can analyze, but I probably, I shall, I will call the person who applied, Mr. Behringer, and see if I can get more clarification.
Well, there's another one on each-
And the thing is, one of these-
The only one that's-
People are moving, it's nice. I jumped to a conclusion.
Welch's is the only one that comes out.
And then you got the Scout?
Yeah, third one is Sean Benjamin, AMN Scout Camperee, apparently do this every year, April 24th to 26th, they want to shut down the park. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
And we're going to move on to police software.
Yes. Go on.
So I guess the, the package you guys have there is that, it's from Axon, and Axon supplies tasers, body cameras, car cameras, license plate readers, redaction software, a bunch of different stuff is what that company supplies. As, I think I, we've talked about before, that we have three tasers left, the other ones are dead and they're non-reparable because they're so old. These are old as well, the other ones were even older. The problem is, is that you can't get things repaired, and that's kind of what the companies want, they want you to buy them, but they don't even sell them now, now they lease them. And I think the chief's came in and talked to you guys about this in the past, that everything is leased, so there's benefits to it, and then obviously, you're hooked, on the hook for constantly having to pay for it, but the tasers themselves, they offer a lease program that they supply all the cartridges, we shoot these every year, just like we do firearms, and they, they would supply those, you don't have to pay for those, they supply the holsters, and the nice thing is the holster is attached to the body camera, so if I do pull this out and point it at somebody, the body camera automatically turns on if I haven't pressed the button. So it gives a nice little feature to that. They also offer holsters for firearms, same type of thing, they're not going to supply the gun, but they supply the holster, and if I pull the gun out, it automatically turns on the body camera, because that has happened before, not with us, but you have hopped out, you know, cops have hopped out of the car, bad things going down, nobody turned the cameras on, because it just, just now happened, and we don't have time to do this, and it would automatically start recording.
Is that a different company than?
Axon, no, all the same.
This is all the same, what you're talking about is all Axon?
Yes, this is a complete package deal, is what Tom looked up for us, Roberts, our other sergeant. And what they would offer with this specific package is the tasers, because like I just said, we need, we need new ones. They would offer tasers, the cartridges, the holsters, they would offer, offer the body cameras, which would all be new, and all-
Which would be?
No, these are brand new.
Oh.
Well, these are a year old, maybe, maybe almost two, I think, close, I can't remember when they, the chief bought these, a couple years. But they offer, they, it would cover these as well as the holsters for the firearms, it would cover three cruiser cameras with recording capabilities, which we don't have, your department does not have. It's kind of a, bigger, you know, maybe like Columbus, Cincinnati, they've kind of gotten away with cruiser cameras because of the cost. It is very expensive to put cameras in police cars, you have a forward-facing camera, obviously, and then you also have one for the bad guy in the back. Sometimes they have rear cameras, they also have audio, you can hear what they're saying, that type of thing, and then the car, when you turn on the lights, automatically activates the cameras, you don't have to press the button. Though, that's one of the things that this offers as well, along with the holster for the firearms. All this system is all linked together, and it does enable in-house redacting. The nice thing with Axon body cameras is if I hold a driver's license here, it automatically redacts it. Our current system does not do that. Unfortunately, we don't always remember, don't hold the driver's license there. The chief wants us to hold it over here. That isn't always a, a natural thing, if I'm, depending on what bad guy I'm talking to, what's going down, am I going to remember to hold the driver's license over here, and then radio to dispatch to let him know who I'm talking to? It's just a nice little feature that Axon has always had in their software program. So this entire package deal for three cruisers, 10 tasers, 10 body cameras, 10 holsters for the tasers, and 10 holsters for firearms, is $28,000 a year. So that's good for five years. If we break the body cameras, the cruiser cameras, the taser holsters, any of that kind of stuff, they will replace that for free. They do give us an unlimited amount of taser cartridges, too, so, but like I said, we, we qualify with those yearly, just like we do firearms, to make sure that we're proficient in shooting what we're pointing at.
Is there any value in the existing stuff that we own, the body cameras or anything like that, if we went to this?
Gov deal anything, so every department I worked at, we had a huge gov deal list. You don't have that here, I don't know why, but-
We used to.
I don't know. But, I mean, computers, you know, you pull the hard drives out, you, I, we, I sold everything. I don't know, I never had a problem selling anything. For some reason, it's just not a thing here. Probably, I would imagine, if the police had to do it, might not have time for it, so I wasn't as busy as Brad, or in the Park District, I was the chief, and I had more free time to do things.
It seems like the leasing is a good idea, because we get a lot of, since, just since I've been on council, a lot of surprise, like, oh yeah, this doesn't work anymore, or this doesn't, you know, we have to approve a big chunk of money, at least we know for five years what we're paying for what you guys need.
It, it is a big cost, and-
Yes.
I understand that, but, you know, I, just the redaction portion, I, you, you guys have no idea-
Well, that's what I was going to ask.
How much time?
We've heard, we've heard a couple of that.
How many man-hours will you be saving if you?
It's, it's tremendous, I mean, just-
Well, approximately, how many man-hours would you save?
Well, I, I can't, I don't want to put a number on it, because I don't record it, and somebody will, you know.
A lot.
Somebody at records requests me, but at any rate, the, the amount of hours, so a typical, let's just say a one and a half hour traffic stop would, would not be unusual for just a drive-in under suspension, and we get a lot of those. Just that stop itself could take easily an hour and a half. So you have the initial contact from the time that we inventory the car, which could take us 20 minutes to go through the complete car, to make sure that there's not a Rolex watch in the center console, because the bad guy said when he got towed, to go through the, the car fully, and then to find a ride for driver, and then obviously, we have to put a tow, tow truck to get there, to, to be done. All of that, all of that initial encounter and everything on there is on body camera. The only time we would turn it off is if the person got picked up by somebody, or maybe we drove them somewhere, which happens a lot as well. So we still keep it running, we don't shut this off until we're completely done with it. So just an hour and a half video would take three hours for us to redact that video.
What would it take with this new system?
It's, it's just minutes. It's, it does, yeah, it's going to do all of itself. You can put on there, like, for us, um, social security numbers, telephone numbers, all that stuff. You know, um, is not supposed to be for public information or consumption, which we say over the radio, which is good. But anyways, uh, you're not supposed to have that on the video. So that portion, somebody has to sit and watch the whole video, write down the exact times that we have to go into redact the video, and then they go through the software and then mark bring those things and blurring them out, and blurring them out. So it, it is very, very time-consuming. I never did it, but I know from the chief and when Manny was here, that's all that they were complaining about, was how long it was taking to do that process. And we still do get those requests, and I know that everybody's like, whoa, we don't have to have those anymore, because now we're charging. The law will allow them to come in and sit and watch a video, and you have to make available to them. Right, and that's happening. It's going to happen. Well, it's already happening, right? But it's, there is a request, we have to provide that video, they're allowed to come in and watch that video, it still has to be redacted, so we still have to go through the process of doing that. This system, I, and one, another officer approached the chief about that a couple of years ago, and we thought that was the way to go. But it's expensive, you know, you get what you paid for, really.
So then my next question's going to be, what, approximately, what do we spend a year? And I realize we don't replace everything every year, but broken down. What, what kind of costs for the cameras, for the tasers, you know?
Well.
For everything, what?
We just bought those cameras.
To go, to what he was saying earlier about things always being broken and that, the problem is, these tasers were bought used to begin with.
Yeah, yeah.
They were already old and outdated when they bought them.
I'm just trying to get a cost.
So, you know, I mean, that's why the, and the cameras, I'm sure these weren't top-of-the-line cameras. I'm just sure, because we go with cheap. And sometime, that's why we have to do this a lot.
I, I brought this up in the past. I, I, I think leasing these types of things is probably the way to go, because we get hit with technology changes all the time, and there's nothing that anyone can foresee. It's always changing. So let's know, we have a fixed cost, we know we're paying for five years. I think that's better than surprise, you know, two years down the road.
I just want to see if we can justify it as far as what we're paying now.
Sure.
Huge increase, or, you know, a fraction of an increase, and then can we afford to do this, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. It's hard to put like an exact number on what we're paying now.
And you don't, you know what, if you don't have that information, maybe you can get it to us, you know, next week, if you had time to look at it and.
Well, wow, now I can just say roughly ten thousand, you know, make up a point, a different funds.
And that's for basically everything that we would, the tasers, because what does a body camera cost when we replace those? I don't, what do we have in us?
What, what are we buying for?
Uh, let me look that up.
Just wait eighteen.
I don't even see it, almost had that invoice in front of me, because it was around five, six thousand, but I don't remember the quantity. That was from like three, three years ago, four years ago.
I don't, I remember looking.
I think the big, the big piece for justification will be trying to get some sort of an estimate on the hours we spend. We have police officers redacting videos versus being police officers.
Right. Is there any log on that, as far as, you know, do we keep a log of how many hours someone has been redacting or redacted that video or anything?
You could look up what you paid Officer Slane prior to twenty-twenty, all of twenty-twenty-four, whatever you paid her, that's all she did. She came in and did all your records requests and body cam videos. That's what she did, that was her function. She did work, I know that, um, she worked three shifts, I think, total in the evidence room. So all of, whatever you guys paid her for twenty-twenty-four, that's what she was getting paid to do, was to come in here and take care of it. And obviously, like I just said, that some of that is going to be slowed down, because now bills are tested, which we should be.
Well, I'll tell you under what Eric said. I remember when our, uh, company, Natural Gas Company, and we had, I don't know how many vans. Well, anyway, they sold us this deal, that hey, if I buy this van, like this with your ambulances, well then, uh, every two years you just pop the body off and sock her down on a new chassis, away you go. And then they changed the chassis.
Josh, how many are, how many are we having to send out, to, because we have to pay for those to be sent out? Is this something that would help us not have to send so many out, or not?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to send any out.
We wouldn't have to.
To local forensics, yes, yeah, we have to send any. I, I believe that, I'm not sure if we can just redact it.
Yeah.
Or we send it to, can we send it to Axon to redact?
Yeah, we do it right here, yep.
So what are, what have we paid?
Everything's done in-house, you don't have to pay extra for it.
We're not sending it to Axon themselves to redact, all right?
Right.
It's us, but it's going to be easier for us.
Our software.
Right. But what we've sent out already, how much have we invested in that?
Uh, well, I haven't sent out any of the body cam footage yet. Local forensics, I still have to give them a few, uh, raw footage, the documents, uh, files. But I can't get you, never mind, yeah, but I, just to make ride, probably be about, which I didn't send them that, just make ride footage, it's something about eight hundred bucks.
I mean, that's what we, but we've got to take all that into consideration, and then Matt's got to look at it and see if we can afford it.
Yeah, all right.
I will say regarding Axon, that from my research I've done and Tom has done, there is no other company that can give us all of this in one package. Uh, there's other companies out there, but they don't offer tasers, or they don't offer.
So we'd have to go with multiple companies to get them covered?
Yes, that's what it seems like, yes.
Is it, is it more cost-effective that way? I understand it'd be more of a pain. I think it'd be great to have it all with one place, and I agree with you, I believe that's what we need to do, is go to leasing. But I guess I just want to make sure we're not, yeah, we're getting the best, but you know, is there something that we would be a little bit?
I'm dabbling with other options too. Um, I know Central Square, which we are going to as our RMS system, Record Management System, in, well, right, in late December. They have, uh, something called Dems, which is their redaction software. Uh, I'm looking into that with Tom, uh, just to, you know, just test out other options. I still have to organize that. It should be done later this month though, uh, with him and I. So, and there's another company I've looked into also that we may approach to see. Essential Square's already using them, just makes sense to talk to them first, then second, in regards to what they can offer us.
Well, if you can get that to us, and then Matt, if you could get us just some sort of financial, as far as what we can or cannot afford. I kind of like to compare apples to apples and know what we're saving. I mean, it's going to be difficult to get those figures, the way it sounds with how they do.
That's, that's an apple, yeah. That's an apple.
And then ultimately, though, regardless if we do this or don't, uh, we're, we're going to have to buy tasers. We are at the end.
Well, we need to do something, whether we get this program or another, you know, for redaction. I mean, we've done that as far as, but the one we have now is, is ridiculous, and that does need replaced.
And this auction site, gov, or whatever you mentioned?
I'm slowly working it up. I created an account recently.
Good.
I have the equipment truck I had to sell, and then I'll just get it going. I know Chase did some of it back in the day.
Yeah, we had a couple ones, we sold a bunch of stuff there.
Yeah.
Sold a bunch of vehicles.
Vehicles and stuff, yeah.
I tried getting into that. I think it might have been inactive for too long. Um, I was able to register with the same email, so we're back on it, it's just I can, you know, do it.
Let's bear in mind auctions.
Yeah.
But that's the, the, at least the taser stuff that's sitting in front of you, that's what that offers. But, you know, then again, this is for cruiser-mounted cameras too, so don't, don't forget about that. Sometimes that helps, uh, as far as evidence goes, and I'm not talking about pinning them, get bad guy, I'm talking about protecting the village.
Right.
So if you have a camera in the police car that shows the cop didn't do something wrong. So that's the other.
It would be a wonderful program to have, I just, we just got to make sure we can afford it.
Oh, yeah, it's expensive, no doubt about it. But the tasers, as far as the tasers go, like I said, um, I have only shot it myself one time at a, at a person, very effective. All the other people, in my thirty-four years, I generally pointed at them, and they realized that they don't want to mess around. So it prevents other things besides just having to use it, so that's what some people don't realize. That tool just itself, being pointed at somebody will diffuse the situation and make people realize they don't want to fight. Um, so that's the purpose for the tasers.
Should we give any active ones or auxiliary?
No, no, I'm joking, no.
All right.
And then everybody's aware that Dan Yev is resigned.
Resigned or part-time?
He's part-time. He'll do this a couple days a month, I mean. So you, so now we have Dan gone, Barry gone, keep Barry gone, and Andy Burmeister, and our chief.
Then we got Ryan.
Ryan is brand new, and he's still figuring out how to put his vest on.
Right, so.
So don't.
No, 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 I'm, I'm leading to a question.
Okay, okay.
And that is, how strong are we?
We are, we are going to start, it, this will cascade into some overtime. There is no doubt about it.
True.
It's going to happen. I just want you guys to understand that.
Give me the right numbers, but if we're supposed to have nine officers and we've got five, where are we, where are we really?
Right, we're supposed to have seven full-time.
Okay, how many do we have?
Well, it's, it's me, Tom, you have Wagner, and Daryl Buckland.
So we're supposed to have seven, and we've got four.
What? Does that seven count the chief, or no?
No, it doesn't count the chief.
So we're down?
Yeah.
Get more than, we're down four full-time?
Yeah.
Officers.
I didn't count the chief, I thought it was technically, so.
I thought the seven did count the chief.
Are we, um, do we have any, uh, applicants?
No, currently. We had a female, and I sent her a rejection letter. And then we have a guy, I'm going to send him a rejection letter too, so, um, just for background stuff. So we had another guy that put in for part-time. He works at Putt Bay full-time, used to work here, um, once upon a time, and he's interested in, uh, at least working here around the winter time, so.
We'll be discussing that during the end of the session next.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on here. Um, we also have police equipment on here, was that the guns and the taser guns and stuff like that, that's got his equipment?
The cameras?
Everything with the software and the cam?
Yeah, I think initially it was just, yeah, the camera.
I don't want to make sure it wasn't a cruiser or something like that, or else.
On the building?
He's not talking about that yet, but I think we're good.
And then the Fall Festival debrief, did you have something you wanted to say, or?
Yes, I just want to state that I'm working on, uh, well, first of all, I think.
Thank you.
Overall, there was no major concerns that went on with the festival. Uh, everyone seemed to be acting accordingly, civilizing accordingly, appropriate. But.
Boy, the beer tent sure tore up the street.
Yes, the beer tent, uh, not occurred. There were some issues with the Dora. Uh, I think that, uh, strict adherence to what was approved by council was not followed in regards to, um, drinks not being well within the official Dora cup.
I didn't know they had Dora cups that big.
Me either. Never seen them. So ORC, while it does state that, um.
Everybody.
That's what they were using for Dora cups, pitchers?
I was not there. Uh, Mason, do you have any input on that? He was there.
I was there earlier in the afternoon, so I'll say from the start of the event around eleven to about two P M., and things were relative, I mean, they were actually all, all good. Everyone was using the cups. I think it was a later in the afternoon slash evenings.
There are some people who, uh, you know, abide by that real strictly, and they.
Well, that's going to have to.
Brought their own cans even.
That's going to have to enforce.
I agree. Uh, we need to be a little more, a little more strict with our enforcement with our officers. Uh, if someone is caught, they technically will have it on the.
Oh, if I made, Tom looked up the law, because it was going on with pitchers, and it says plastic device, so he didn't want to. He didn't know exactly where his boundaries was going to be, because it says. Yeah, but I don't know if the officers had that information, what exactly.
Yes.
I'm just saying, because Tom didn't look it up, because I was here from morning till night, and there was pitchers all day.
Where are those kind of pitchers coming from?
Matter of fact, the car that got into the accident, the drunk driver, uh, he had pitcher.
No, but it has to be adhered to, that's what council.
Yes, we will have way more stricter adherence to this. Uh, while ORC does state that, um, a requirement that beer and blah blah blah, it must be in plastic cups, that's all it says. But then it says later on, legislative authority may subsequently modify the public health and safety requirements as determined necessary by legislative authority. And that change was in our Exhibit A of our ordinance, all beer, wine, or intoxicating liquor must be contained in the official cup of the Dora. So that was, that's the wording. Going forward, we must use a Dora cup.
Growing pains.
Right now, it's technically suspended. Uh, I'm going to need more conversations, more communication with the reestablishments. Uh, we will also need, uh, to be on their insurance policy, as additionally insured. Uh, we need to be named on it, that is. To make sure that we are adhering to our insurance policies, uh, because that's what they are requiring going forward. Uh, there is a two thousand five hundred dollar, um, cost from our insurance to, from the special event that was had, AKA the Fall Festival, uh, that we will be paying in due time.
Well, there was, there was more than just that day. There were issues leading up to it. Ten days before, I had, if council will remember, I asked if the mayor had reached out to the good vendors and asked for the insurance to have the village named on there. So they would take their insurance company and they'd have us named on there, which would, we would be an additional insured. So I reached out to Josh to make sure he had gotten those, ten days before the festival. He didn't know what I was talking about. So he went to the mayor. The mayor didn't know what I was talking about, yet I asked him three times in different meetings about those.
I heard it in this, in here, these chambers. I have heard you ask.
Right, right, and I had, and he had told me he would take care of them. That led to, are we even covered for the festival? Has anybody reached out to our insurance company? So Josh reached out to our insurance company, and no, we were not covered, and they were not going to cover the Dora, because there was no proof that we were even on the state website. We were not on the state website to be able to have the Dora, so our insurance company wasn't going to cover us. Up until three thirty on Friday before the festival, we had no insurance. When Josh presented it, I think nine days before the, um, festival, to the mayor that he had to sign a waiver or an indentment, mayor went through the roof. And screamed at Josh for fifteen minutes in his office, because he was upset that we reached out to the insurance company. So, I'm sorry, we need insurance coverage when we have festivals, especially ones with alcohol. Thank God Josh and Mason got it accomplished, but they were, I mean, it was a stressful ten days. It was an extremely stressful ten days. That can't happen again. I've already talked today, we need to have a policy of certain items that are going to need to be in, and council needs to approve them before a festival goes forward. We have to make sure that our town is covered under situations like this. We cannot let this happen again. The Dora, that's going to have to be strictly enforced, that's how we wrote the policy. My question is, on, on a festival like this, we had two officers on, is that correct? Because, um, Officer Roberts told me that there was just the two of them. Did we have auxiliary? Because I was, was under the assumption we had more people walking around. So we only had two to cover our town plus cover these festivals, is that correct, or am I incorrect on that?
Two auxiliary, or one auxiliary and two officers was here.
For the entire day, and then, see, and I think in the future, we need to have, like, two officers at the festival. Just do, just doing the festival, and then our other two officers.
Who we used to be.
Yeah, we, we have to. If something, if something happened, that's either going to, two different incidents happen, you can't expect one officer to go to something, a domestic on his own, and then try and handle something that might have developed at the festival through drunkenness or something like that. We can't have that, that's, that's.
Well, the problem is now we only have four police officers.
Well, I understand. We don't have any festivals in the future.
Yeah.
But there will be a policy written, and, you know, everyone's encouraged to come to that meeting when we, we have it, so that we can knock this out and make sure that our village is covered. And that certain, it, it's just like when I asked about the gray water, where is it being dumped? And originally, mayor told me, Brian, said it's okay to put it in storm sewers. If that happened, the EPA would have been breathing down our necks, and we wouldn't have had any festivals in the future, they would have shut us down. We can't let those kind of things. We, the other thing, Wood County Health Department was not contacted until Thursday, when I said, Josh, did anybody contact Wood County Health Department? These things are in place for everyone's protection. If someone comes here and they don't have a license, or even they do have a license, but somebody gets sick and goes into the hospital, guess who they're going to? guess who they're gonna come after? They're gonna come after us, because we didn't get named on their insurance policy. When we reached out to the insurance company, that was one of the things they wanted, they wanted insurance policies from the, or indentments from the food vendors with our village named on it as additional insured. That is just standard, we, that is just standard stuff that we do, and it's simple to do. It really doesn't, it doesn't cost the food vendor anything, all they have to do is say, I need this, and the insurance company backs it up to us. They just put it on there the way we want it written, and it's on there. But there are just certain things that, you know, like, Wood County Health Department said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna let this go this time, but from now on, we need no less than two weeks' notice, there's no reason not to give them a couple months' notice. Um, and, and let them know and then, and get all the information that we need, but that policy is gonna have to be.
Do we need to create a festival permit application that has these timeframes and it's on the people that want to schedule and run these festivals, and if they don't meet the deadlines, then there is no festival?
Right.
We have to have this stuff sent to us via email.
There'll be two, be one, if we host it, and one, another organization hosts the festival.
Yeah, well, we didn't host this one, right?
I would say we did.
Yeah, we did.
I, I understand.
Here's the other thing.
Technically, we didn't, but we did, I give that.
Well, the money came from the taxpayers, so.
Yeah.
We did, and that's another problem, our attorney's not even sure the way that was all handled was kosher. And that's gonna have to be looked at, um, how we, how we do that for next year's budget, that, that can't happen again. Um, the attorney, you know, has some, some questions on all of that, and I, I have those as well. I wanna know that we're doing this right, um, you know, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do something and find out because there's no checks and balances, I, if, if, if the village is paying for this, honestly, I would like to have an itemized statement of what was paid for and how much it was, so I don't know if you've already started to get those, those bills, but I would like an itemized statement of everything that was paid out for the festival. Um, and I think that should be part of the record because we gotta make sure we're doing this right. We gotta make sure that we're recording things right, so that if a citizen comes to us and say, well, how'd you pay for this and what caused? We know what it was, and we're not scurrying around to get that information, there has to be oversight. We can't just allocate X amount of dollars and say, yeah, go have fun, we, we can't do that. These are the taxpayers' money, and we have to be, um, accountable for where this money's going and how much of it went there. So, that's all gotta be in, in the policy, um, but then, for future, we gotta do something different, um, as far as, it can't go into the mayor's fund, it cannot, it's gotta, there's something different we gotta do.
This last festival was a big learning experience for me personally, um, I got a lot of information from Pep that I'm gonna put into a policy, mostly in regards to when we, the village hosts a, a festival. It's kinda easy, it's easier if, like, the Chamber hosts the good old time, good old summertime festival, 'cause they're the ones who are principally, you know, hosting it, they, they have their insurance. Uh, but since all that kinda switched, changed to us, we, we had more work to do.
Well, the festival committee needs to also inform each vendor what they can and cannot do, so where are they dumping their gray water? If they, if they're caught dumping it into our storm system, they are held responsible. You need to have all that written out, and they need to sign it, they, they need to sign it, so we have something that protects us. None of that happened this time.
Right, there's gonna be a comprehensive listing approach to all of this, if we, if we host or they host.
But I'm even concerned like this Chris Berenger, when he comes in for an auction, and now, if, if we were to deem closing down the alley, do we need something from him on his insurance that would hold, you know, that would be, the village would also be additionally insured? The questions for an insurance company, I don't know the answer to that, but it, it, it makes me wonder if, when we do these, um, and, and when we hold an event, we need to reach out to our insurance company and make sure we are covered. Um, otherwise, we would've had a festival and we wouldn't have insurance coverage. So, yeah, the, the twenty-five hundred dollars, it, it was better, because at first they were like, this could cost five thousand, um, it ended up being twenty-five, but that has to come out of the festival fund, that, that's where that needs to be paid out of. That's part of the festival, um, just because they didn't wanna check into it doesn't mean that it wasn't a cost of the festival. That's my thoughts, so. Anyhow, so that's, we, you know, was there anything else you wanted to add on the, um, festival?
No, that, that doesn't.
Just for reference, though, for our security, if we don't have enough officers, uh, you can always contact Wood County Sheriff's Office, and they have auxiliary officers, uh, an army, and they work the fair, they work the Applewood Fest, they work Lucky Fest, they work, they work all those, and it's free.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good amount.
I think it's a donation.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and, and you'll have sworn officers, I mean, they're, they're auxiliary, but they're sworn officers that are reserved.
They're good people.
Yeah, no, when I, when I found out we only had two officers for both, to cover our village and this festival, that's, that's unacceptable. I mean, that's, that's put too much on two officers, and even with one auxiliary, that's not, you know, a whole lot of help.
Especially if this thing grows.
Right, right.
I have to.
So, yeah, some things we need to shore up there, um, so, if we can get an itemized statement of that.
Yeah, I already, like, I don't have it, where I can hand it to, neither's gonna add in, like, the cost, what the village has paid so far. So, well, it's, some of it's, like, encumbered. The total for, for the festival was three thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars, that's without the Dora cups, that's how much was the village's, village is the one that cut the checks for the entertainment, uh, some gift cards for, uh, vendors that were involved, I have forms here, looking for the right word, so, and then that does not include the twenty-five hundred that actually has not been paid as of today, so.
So if there's money left over, what happens with that money that was?
There's other things that are coming out of this fund, if you wanna see everything, the whole year, like, there's things that are non-festival related.
But wasn't there a certain amount of money designated to the festival earlier?
In the, like, a year ago, yes.
Okay, so that shouldn't be coming out anywhere else, that should only be used for the festival.
Uh, I guess I'm, I'm not quite following.
So, I believe we agreed to ten thousand on the money for the festival, is that correct, do you remember?
This fund.
I don't remember if it was ten.
This fund, the fifteen thousand, beginning of the year, uh, previous discussion, the first expense would've been back to April's bonus, there was a suggestion that come out of the mayor's fund?
Well, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying, there was, first of all, I guess we gotta clarify, we gotta find out exactly how much money we had agreed for the, to use on the festival, and that's the money we're talking about. See, to me, that money should've went into, it should've never went into the mayor's fund, it should have went into a separate festival. And, and then, anything that has to do with the festival should've come out of there, and anything that isn't used should be given back, right? I mean, what, what happens at the end of the year if there's X amount of dollars left over, doesn't that go back into the general?
Just go back into the general fund?
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so the rest of these things that you're saying should not come out of, if it's, if it's ten thousand, if I'm remembering correctly.
That's what sounds, you was asking fifteen, but yeah.
So, I'm saying, ten thousand, the festival comes out of there, and whatever's left over goes back into general fund, not into the mayor's. To me, it should've never went into the mayor's discretionary fund, and our attorney agrees, so, it's, you know, that should've went into a separate fund. I understand it did, but what I'd be doing is only taking out the festival amount, because that's what we appropriated for. So, to start paying other things, bonuses and stuff like that, that's not what that money was appropriated for. Does that make sense to everybody?
Sure, it's a line item.
Yep.
Yes, that's what I was.
A mayor's discretionary fund and a festival fund, two separate things, they should not be.
Well, we never agreed to put it in the mayor's, you know, all we agreed was that, yes, we were to have, and I believe it was ten thousand, um, I'll stand corrected if, if we find out differently, but I believe it was ten thousand, but it was to be used for the festival. Now, anything that's left over goes back into the general fund, um, and then all the other stuff would have come out of the, the mayor's fund, so, you know, the mayor's discretionary fund, so what, you know, I don't know what all you've had there, but it doesn't have anything to do with festival, it, it doesn't come out of the ten thousand. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I understand you're saying the village festival, so like, for the Halloween parade, do you wanna keep that separate from the village festival too?
Well, I mean, that's what that money was designated for, if we go back into the notes, you'll find that it was, it was appropriated for this festival. Is that my understanding, is everybody else's understanding that was here? So, it should only be for that festival. I mean, there's.
Well, bottom line is, we cannot let stuff bleed back into this.
Well, no, that, and, and like I said, we have to have.
Far from you that line item, it's gotta stay in the guardrails.
Well, and every, and like I said, there should be no question, if somebody comes in here and says, I wanna know exactly what was spent on this, we should be able to pull that up immediately and go, this is, this is what it was, and the rest of it that we didn't use went back to the general fund.
It's good timing to be having this conversation, because we're gonna be much prepared. She's got a valid point, but our software, you can't go in and name lines what you want them to, I've had this discussion with Phil. So, like, Phil would like to see.
I would like to see more.
He'd like to see ten more lines in operating supplies, he would like it to be like, uh, medical supplies and fuel and the old system that you do that.
Well, but what I'm saying is, this is a total different, can you do a total different fund? Because this should be, because it should've never went into mayor's.
You'd have to figure it out away, of creating a line item somehow.
The mayor's discretionary fund has no oversight.
Might be tough.
The mayor's discretionary fund has no oversight, we can't have a festival of ten thousand dollars committed to it with no oversight, is what I'm saying.
That, like, if it goes forward in the future, if I, my impression would be whatever number you're gonna pick, it's five thousand, it's ten thousand, the village would actually write a check to this 501(c)(3) for head and mouth.
Right, and that's not, right, and that's not what happened.
And then whatever they do with it.
Right.
After it leaves, you know, the, our checking account, it's not like they're gonna refund back if they have leftovers.
Right, well, and I, I don't know.
No, that was.
And I don't know that much.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Um, it'd be more of a donation, because up until a few minutes ago, I was confused as to who was holding 501(c)(3). Um, I thought the village was holding it, which, again, was like, are we even allowed to do that? And if so, what, what are, what's the oversight that we have to do for that? Nobody can give me those answers, so, if Tim's correct, and it has nothing to do with the village, which I wanna verify that, um, then, you know, that's, we don't need to deal with that, deal with that.
So I, I think we just need to, and Matt, you let us know if this is possible, I think what you're saying is, we need to have parades, festival, all that, needs to be one line item, the mayor's discretionary fund needs to be another line item. Can we? It would be nice, but it's not, that, if everyone come in my office, if I print it off the fund we have now. Yeah. It's gonna be about thirteen pages long, fill once more line items. Yeah. This, our software's the state of Ohio.
Sure.
You can't just go in and add line items and name them what you want, it, it, the software don't allow you to do that.
But for the future, we would, we would basically be donating, would we not?
Yeah.
We would be donating to the committee, and that's what he's saying, once we're, once we donate it, we don't have any, we don't have.
What is like the Halloween, what, what line item is the Halloween festival or?
Well, that's the thing, I don't know how many we pay for those and stuff like that.
A lot of times, it comes out of operating supplies, it's not like it's Halloween, you know, it's not like.
Sure.
You know, if I'm not around, you know, or don't have a road somewhere, it's just one of them things, you gotta know the nuances, or you, you'd be like, which, which line is that now?
I understand, we have software limitations.
I can't just rename it, it won't let you, it won't let you change the date. I just think the big thing, it sounds like the thing that I'm getting at, there needs to be oversight, and things like that need to not be in the discretionary fund where there is no oversight.
Right. And, and the money that was appropriated to that festival of ten thousand needs to be accounted for, and anything left over from that ten thousand needs to go back into the general fund, not in there for the mayor to use on whatever else he feels. Because it should've never went into the mayor's fund, it should've been its own separate fund to pay for the festival, and then whatever money wasn't used appropriated back into the general fund. Um, but that's not how it was set up, and I get it, um.
So we will correct that issue when?
Right, going forward, we will, but, but we still need to have a record of what was spent for the festival, so that we have it, the taxpayers come and ask, we, we have it and we're covered. Um, and then, moving forward, we just gotta, you know, clarify that, but, um, anything left over after paying for these festival things needs to go back, not stay in the mayor's fund.
Can we, this winter, work on a festival application?
I've been working on.
That has like the timeframes, like, you have to have the health department so many days prior to, and all that stuff laid out, and then if they don't meet it, then the festival.
Right.
So you guys aren't scrambling and doing things that aren't your job at the last minute, trying to make something happen for.
It was a wild, like, forty-eight hours.
Ultimately, it was, I think it was a good thing for the village, I think people enjoyed it, but we have to be better and protect ourselves and not cause more stress on you guys to make everything happen at the last minute.
And right now, you said the Dora is shut down.
Suspended.
Well, suspended until, because again, our insurance company wants, um, to be named on each of the entities in town.
Yes.
And so that has to happen before the Dora can go forward. Now, the signs are all still out, I just hope that each entity knows that it's been suspended, and that our police officers know that it's been suspended.
We have the communications, I can do more, I should do more, I will do more regarding the police.
Now, when you do that insurance, I, I also think they need to have some sort of rules put in front of them, that they sign that states you must use Dora cups, you know, it must be from this hour to the, I understand that information's out there, but I think it should be on paper, and they need to be held accountable that they read it and that they, they know what's, what's expected.
Don't fill any pitchers.
No more pitchers, that's for Dan's share going forward, unless we wanna do some Dora official pitchers, but I don't see that through that time soon.
So, okay, Andy?
Okay, I'll look for that, and I'll have three by council.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, all right, anything else for public safety before we move on? All right, here we go, move on, we've got finances, but now we'll do personal policy and ordinance review. We just, we mentioned the festival event policy, that's, we're gonna work on that, I've already talked today.
Yes, I should look at page two, sorry, 'cause it's like, we really need to have that.
Yes, it will be done. Copy and paste it from where I received from Pat.
So, Josh, do you wanna ordinance twenty, twenty-five, thirty?
Yes, I have the draft, uh, on page twenty, twenty-one, uh, I sent it also via email to everyone. Uh, basically, as it, as it stands now, um, we will be, well, it'll be emergency next week, but it won't be in effect until November first, the day after the official resignation is effective for our current clerk treasurer. That way, uh, we are able to, um, have, well, vacancy, so, part-time position for clerk counsel will be created, and the appointed office of fiscal officer will also be created, basically, Matt will basically position for finance officer, if you're fiscal officer, we have to have a fiscal officer per the ORC, assuming we get rid of the clerk treasurer. I'm getting a little bit more, um, clarification from Paul on some statutory laws, I'm gonna make sure we all break, uh, and some of the, the structure, and make sure things make sense, but for the most part, I think, well, he, first of all, he okayed this draft we have in front of us, we have it in front of us right now, I just wanna make sure we.
What, what does that?
Dan, I have a question, I need to stop and ask.
Yes.
Are you okay with Mason, are you okay with what we're proposing?
Well, Mason, I wanna make sure we, where we have not offered him the position.
Okay.
Uh, he's only showing some interest, and I did invite him today, say a few extra hours to get further interested eventually, or maybe he's not interested except today, maybe, maybe I scared him away. But, uh, we can talk about how, should we one go that, that route, we can talk more about that structure, how we prefer to do it during executive session next, next Tuesday.
I am curious if we go this route, does, is Gary still on his part-time, or does that do away with that as well?
I would say it does away with that.
It does.
It does not, I would say. It's not, I would say. I don't believe, I think he's pretty busy right now. I would say that we could work out maybe a different arrangement, or maybe even the same arrangement. Going forward, I just have to talk to Gary on that.
No, that's fine, I was just curious as to, we were kind of both curious, but I don't know, I didn't have any answer to that, so.
Nothing against Gary at all. I've seen him a lot, so.
Okay. Any questions on the ordinance? We're gonna go on to planning, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Don't raise your hand then. Planning Commission meeting on October 27th.
Yes, the first planning commission of my tenure here, I was going on until 27. Maybe there was maybe two or three under Chase, but I'm hoping to give this back to maybe even a monthly or quarterly planning commission meeting. I know my predecessors before Chase, they put a lot of work into planning commission, I think it does deserve that kind of attention. This one will be in regards to love expansion over on 18, and to discussing more in depth and providing a recommendation to council on the adult-use cannabis operators, where that belongs in our code, should they approve or disapprove, recommend or disapprove, not recommend. Either way, council can either accept their recommendation or deny it. The council has that right, and there will be public hearings after this.
Several questions.
Yes.
Who is the planning commission?
Planning commission, it's in our code, I don't know if I can read it off the dry language, but the mayor appoints, I believe, all besides the council member, the council member is Tim, which was approved by council a couple months ago.
Did you want the names?
Do you want the names?
Oh, no, so, so the mayor appoints, who's on the planning commission?
It matters, yeah, in short, yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes, I can print off the exact wording if you'd like, it's.
No, that's okay, I just, I don't, I don't know anything about a planning commission, so I just was trying to understand what it is.
I'll just give you one of the topics when I was sitting in on it, one of them was truck route around town, that's something that they would address.
Okay, so I have some, can, can we go to the planning commission?
Oh, they're public meetings. They, in regards, like, it is a public, it is a parcel merge or parcel split, or a roads being dedicated, or a new utility service, or.
Do we have plans?
Minor lot split of five more parcels, stuff like that, that goes before parcel report, planning commission, VZA handles other stuff.
Okay, do we have plans for the love expansion, proposed plan?
Yes, yes, we have, we have plans, we also.
I'm assuming that their expansion is that they're putting a drive in across from the road, across the street?
Yes, yes.
That they're moving the drive over, if you're interested?
Well, the existing drive, as it stands now, will be currently still in use, but only towards automobiles, like cars, vans, trucks. Semi-trucks will have to use that new entrance, and I think that alone will have a lot of safety benefits. And then we are also discussing maybe a roundabout, or maybe even a new traffic light at that intersection.
Yeah, is that the state or is that us?
We've had a conversation with ODOT, we have to reignite some of those conversations. ODOT, as of right now, is not going to give us anything, so we are getting a little more creative. I know Love's has already purchased a lot of the land to the west and north of them for this expansion, and they're doing this drive, and they're gonna dedicate that right away to us. So they've put a lot of money in working this already, they know the issues on 18, I mean, every time I drive on 18, there's a truck in the middle of the road there waiting to get through.
It affects Love's more than Sheetz, if you go by there at 5:00, there's a wind, it takes 20 minutes to get out of Love's.
Sheetz kind of made the problem worse, and they're also pretty aware, I think they're all aware.
Yeah, it's not on Sheetz, I mean, they were approved to build on that road.
Oh, of course.
And, you know, so, okay, I was just curious.
Let's discuss more.
I don't think there should be, I think there should only be one-way in Love's, and it should all be, we should have a traffic light or roundabout, I think you're discussing.
I think at minimum, if we do close the existing entrance, egress, egress, there should be a gate that our fire trucks could potentially smash through easily in case of emergency, we don't want to take away a way to get out in case of emergency.
Sure.
That's my thoughts.
All right, I may add to that, that sounds interesting.
Any other questions on personal policy and ordinance?
I will tell you this, there was a news on last night, and I can't remember, I think it was on Spectrum, but yesterday, the state and governor's office released a survey, a study they had done, and the uptick in traffic incidents from recreational use of marijuana. There's a noticeable uptick, and people tested, in that tested positive.
People should not be driving low, and doesn't matter, or can't, in my opinion.
All right, we're gonna move on to economic and community development.
Nothing to report.
And our village funding is off, so, yeah, what did you have, did you want to go over?
As far as the list I had, there's not any new information reported on the ambulance, still, unless Phil has anything to add, still at Finley Ford, I'm not sure.
The engine's in. They got the engine in, and that's the last thing he told me, so it's a matter of just putting all the components on it, getting the body back together.
All right.
So we are making progress. And the insurance company did pay to tear the engine down, because I argued at that point, I said, why should I have to pay to tear an engine down, then he turned me down? I didn't want to accrue the extra $3,500.
Sure.
So they agreed to do that, and they did find that there was a bolt in there actually sheared off.
So that being, they'll cover it?
I don't know, at this point, they haven't got back with you.
No, they have not.
It was from that, yeah. But that looks better, because I've been telling them, something happened at that moment, so a bolt that came out would be different than a bolt that was sheared, so.
Yes.
There's a little bit of light now, that you sure should pay for.
For both of you, maybe you can get contact on this. Did they get the old Dodge police truck fixed?
It's never gonna be fixed, it's gonna be constantly breaking down.
Well, I know that.
Constantly in that lot over there. But either now, I think we can use it, it's over a year in this lot, I haven't seen them drive it, I think they might be afraid to drive it. Know any more about that, Phil?
I don't know anything about it. All I know is I wish I'd never gave it to them.
Thing is, that thing, I want to get rid of myself, it's annoying me. How do you please?
It bothered us for three years before you got here.
Matt, what else you got for us?
Jackson Township EMS, we, not really anything new on my end, I prefer Phil, he went ahead and anything, still in conversations, they're checking their options, but it still shows some promise, but there's no ink on any lines anywhere, as we all know, so. Star Ohio, we've been talking about that and releasing our investments. We all know the Fed cut rates in September, I have the Star Ohio rate on there, 4.28%. So it dropped, it did not drop the full quarter percent, but that's where that's at. We recently received a second half payment for EMS services provided to Henry Township. They were invoiced all of it, that's the whole year for 2024, and then with the option of paying, you know, first half, second half, and that's what they chose to do, so, you know, they paid their second half payment, so they're, they are paid in full for 2024 at this point, so, some good news there. As you can see on number six, computers have been installed, naturally, there were some bumps there, but all in all, everything went pretty well. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, we gotta get our computer back someday.
Yes.
I don't really know any.
You will, I apologize for the inconvenience, I should have done it last week, but he came in for a few other reasons. Yes, I, Street's.
I don't know why they even had to take it out, I mean.
Your keyboard got to be grungated, yes.
Something.
I apologize. Street's is also going through, well, he's got their old computer, but still.
I really don't like this computer company, just so you know. I think we could do better.
IT company?
IT company, yeah, I think we could do better, but that's.
I'm hearing.
That's just, you make my opinion.
But you are unanimous on it.
I hear you.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Number eight's the mayor's court fee schedule, April's been leading this, Josh has been involved some, Mr. Roche's being, we're switching the ball win, it's time, you know, a good time to update the fee schedule, more than a good time, it was pretty much an absolute, you know, necessity, so we don't have it ready to bring before council yet, but it's, we're, we want to do it before the end of the year, it's, it just takes some time to go through everything and kind of evolve, I think you may agree with that, so, so that's just something in the works. Last thing, number nine's not new, it happens every year, and I'll have it for the meeting next Tuesday, the resolution accepting the rates and amounts determined by the budget commission. In my world, it's just, it's a yearly, something you do yearly, so, it's part of your budget process, that's, the budget commission's made up, it's like through the wood counting, it's the prosecutor, the auditor, and trying to think who the third one is, the budget commission, every quarter, or not treasurer, it becomes the budget commission, so. Other than that, that is just quick. Do you know what's going on? If there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions, or?
Did we miss anything that you wanted? Yeah, I made sure I added the court enforcement report for September. If you'd like, that's what he's done this September according to him.
Was this going to be like the talk updated, the report?
We had a monthly like this, we'll probably have more on this going forward, and I said before the meeting started, you also have, I also shared the court enforcement Google document with all council, too, so you can see it in real time.
You did share that?
I shared it as a.
You'd all, all viewers of the Google Doc, and they can send to your, your working effort.
It was earlier today.
Oh, okay, I'll check. All right, anybody else have anything they want to add or ask, or, all right, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Just go to work.
The United States of America, the good republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've had a lot of great thoughts.
I'm surprised to hear the pharmacist.
Yes, I have a note that all.
Excuse me?
Sorry.